Okay.
Here.
Okay.
Lady has been doing, so it's got a rule of regulations. You're doing that from the front. Six, five.
Yes, sir. I thought you were about. This is not being seen. Okay. Yes, sir. So I have a few things that are at your spot that I just wanted to draw your attention to before we go through our superintendent reports. The first thing, if you'll look at our COVID dashboard, this is today's dashboard. I just wanted to print that out. You can see our total cases at the end of today were seven. Two staff, two for the staff and five for the students. Of course, last week kind of helped with the quarantining and helped us to get through that. But I think that when you see in the news how cases are going down and usually whatever's going on there, you can kind of see that reflection and that trend here with our school district as well. But this is something that I'm real proud of. And so wanted to just kind of point that out to you for you guys. And I mean, that good. The other thing that I just, before we get started in our superintendent reports, I put something out for you on your desk. And you'll see it starts with an email from Dr. Steve Martin. It's paperclip. I want to go through that with you. So I sent to you, you've got at the bottom of that are basically the staff email, I mean, the parent email that we sent out, that I sent out yesterday to all of our parents. And also I sent that to you guys yesterday morning prior to sending that out as well as our staff email. I also wanted you to see that I did forward that to Dr. Steve Martin, who is the Burleson Local Health Advisor. And you can see what his response to me is. Fran, this looks very thorough and covers the mitigation of waterborne transmission of infectious agents. I feel this should work well for your ISD. Please keep me informed of any concerns and congratulations on your efforts to keep your students safe in these very challenging times. He's signed it as the Burleson Public Health, knowing that Johnson County does not have a health department. However, he is that local public health advisor. So I just wanted you guys to have a copy of that as well so that you can see that he did review what we are doing for our students to keep them safe. Also, just want to point out two things to you because I think these are important. We did send out to, and I had so post this boiled water notice, Susan Jones, which was sent to me from JSU. Fort Worth also has their stamp on it and CDC also has information. If you click on that CDC information under hand washing, there are three points. It says, "In many situations, you can use tap water and soap to wash hands. Follow the guidance from your local public health officials." Second bullet is be sure to scrub your hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds and rinse them while under running water. Third bullet, if soap and water are not available, use an alcohol-based sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol. Because we were given this from JSU, which is where our local water information and they were providers, where it says to boil under hand washing, and we did not have that water. And being in that, actually, we are doing two, doing an extra step there. It says that you can use hand sanitizer, but we are also using baby wipe. So I just wanted you guys to have that information in case you have questions that come your way. You are, have all that information for you.
Well, if Steve Martin, I just can't approve, doesn't it work?
Yeah. Yes, he is very conservative and he always makes sure that things are followed and done appropriately. Okay? So you guys have that as our local school board. You've got that information. Any questions on that? Okay. One other thing that I just wanted to also let you know is that, you know, we had, I want to compliment Blake and his department because I want you to know that Blake, every day, has been 24 hours on top of this situation and they have done an amazing, amazing job.
Thank you, Blake.
Great job. And not only that, the week before, the Monday before, we were out like two weeks ago. He knew that this was coming and he foresaw the issues and he had his department working on making sure that all of our buildings were prepared for this and that our heaters were where they needed to be to protect our buildings, knowing, you know, just making sure getting my, because knowing that the electricity bill might be a little bit higher, but that we protect it. And I think that when you can see the minor, minor issues that we suffered, which were very, very minor, that's attributed to their forethought and Blake's forethought in that. And so he took care of business and we appreciate that. Want to also let you know that just this morning, he called me 7:30, that there was a busted pipe at ninth grade. It was found outside, thank goodness, that it was, the water was running. They tried to fix it, but could not fix, but it was a little bit more extensive and we had to call our plumber. So they did come out. We did have to shut water down at 2 o'clock this afternoon, but we sent an email out to all of those parents. It was only at the ninth grade campus. Our service center in transportation, so ninth grade campus was the only one that affected students. Luckily, our ag facility out there, the kids were at the pit gym because of all of the ag activities going on. So that was the only area that was affected, but we did notify those parents of those affected students. So they were out there, they're fixing it. It's going to take all night to glue. He's going to turn it back on first thing in the morning before breakfast needs the water. And so y'all have communicated that time and then we'll be back on schedule. So just letting you guys know that. Hopefully, you know, they're on top of it looking and monitoring as that water comes in. So just kind of giving you that update. Okay?
We were very, very fortunate.
Yes, very, we were very, very fortunate. And I think also just everything that they did in their forethought and prep helped.
We appreciate you being around.
We learned a lesson from our job.
That was such a bad one. We was talking to somebody, but yeah, we were out here yesterday, no.
Yeah, we were all there, we was wiping up water.
Never think about things like that. That makes you think about it now, so you don't forget us.
Okay.
Appreciate the job you got up there and everything.
Thank you.
Great job.
Keep going.
Okay. So now we're going to go through our superintendent reports for tonight. So we're going to start with our enrollment. And just bear with me, I don't have a task tonight because again, we all had to just kind of go with it. And we thank Emily for taking care of this last week and her week off. And we met up here Friday and we just printed it so that, because we need this copy for our book. So just bear with me a little bit, I may be a little bit slow returning my pages tonight. You'll start with our enrollment and you'll see that as of February 12th, we were at 5431. Again, we're just trying to manage that enrollment, you know, just this year with COVID, it's just been our challenge. I know that there is a bill out in the legislature to look at, what was that, the bill? I mean, I've had so many different things go on that we looked at that's being proposed for.
To fund on enrollment instead of ADA.
Yeah, they have a bill out funding, to fund schools through enrollment and not ADA, which that would be, could be a plus or a negative, but it wouldn't go on those percentages of ADA that could help us. So we'll see how that bill goes. And just also, just so you know, next Tuesday, myself and Jolynn and Cory and Rebecca and Holly, we're going to be taking a trip to the Capitol in Austin to meet with Dwayne Burns, our local, I was supposed to say local health.
Way to go.
Local O. And so we've got, along with some of the other Johnson County superintendent, and we've got a list of things that we're going to be talking to him about just so that he can promote. So if you've got anything that you think about between now and then you want me to talk to him about, shoot me an email. Okay?
Do you want a t-shirt or anything for it?
T-shirt. Depends what it says.
Maybe you got a shirt.
So just so you guys know, but if you guys have anything that you'd like to share or want me to ask, please send those to me.
Do you think it'd be culture from her?
Well, that's a little iffy, yeah.
Okay, the next thing is our attendance. So you know, our attendance continues to be really, really good considering the year we've had. And so also, if you notice that on our agenda tonight, we do have several attendance waivers we're bringing to you and that's from January 11th. And we'll also be looking at February 12th. And we're going to be looking at that day, that was that Friday in between, after that other day that we were off. So we're going to be looking at those dates. If we need to bring those waivers to you, we'll bring that in future board meeting. But you've got our attendance reports right there for you. Again, that 96.39 is a district average, which rounds out to, well, it doesn't round off to 97, but it's very close. So that would be good if we could get to 97% overall this year. Again, our ADA report, you've got that for this year. February 5th, we were at 5365.5. Again, just, it's running consistent with our enrollment compared to last year. How our enrollment compares to last year, ADA basically is consistent with that comparison as well. Okay, next is our child nutrition reports. I'm going to ask Carrie to come on up and you can see, I spoke with her, we spoke yesterday also, and great improvement with our grain total from January, which kind of represents bringing all of our kids back from school. But I'm going to, she's got several things she'll visit with you guys on in regards to food, child nutrition.
In January, we were at 3,457 breakfasts and 4,183 lunches from January 2020. So that's very good. And USDA has come forth and told us they are going to give us some money, gave us a calculation. Rebecca gave y'all a copy of that. It's around $170,000 that will really help us. Today, we did not have milk for breakfast and that's required of the milk pattern. But PDA did let us submit a waiver knowing that we're going to have supply issues. And other farms has let us know that they will not have chocolate milk probably for a little bit. They haven't given us an exact timeframe, so we'll just have white milk for the next few days. And that's again, another requirement that we're supposed to have a choice of flavor of milk. We're supposed to have at least two choices and we will not probably for this week and maybe part of next week.
Is that because of delivery?
Yeah.
So out of our control.
You're sure we're not going to.
I think other farms has had some plants shut down due to lack of water. So we'll do a waiver for that as well so that we're not in any trouble. We have been able in the boiling water order by boiling water for hand washing in the kitchen. And then they're using sanitizer and then wearing gloves like they always do. So they're, you know, triple cleaning, protecting the hands and we're not doing any things that we have to add water to. Like we did not do gravy today, we did not do mashed potatoes today. We just did chicken nuggets and french fries and steak fingers and kept it, all the things that we don't have to use water for. And that's what we'll do tomorrow as well. We're going to use some garbanzo beans that are prepackaged, dried and flavored instead of the refried beans that we would have used. So we're just substituting menu items. We're taking what we would have had the week we were out and that's what was coming on our tracks. Everybody knew to our orders. So we're backing up the menu a week and moving things around. So it's some shuffling, but it's not anything that's amenable by any means. We're not washing produce with water that's not boiled, we're boiling it first. And just making sure that the kids are protected. And even the schools that are not under the boil water order are doing the same thing so that my message is clear to all my staff and there's not confusion on what to do. Any questions for me?
No, you're a lot, far. Your whole department, just everything you've got wrong with you.
$170,000, is that, is it from the, is that a, just a start or is that?
It's based on a formula for, it's what you fed last year versus what you fed this year, the difference. And then 55%, I think it was, Rebecca?
I'm going to talk a little more about it.
So they actually kind of rewarded the schools that didn't feed, which is really discouraging to me because their difference is going to be greater.
Exactly.
So, you know, yeah, it's like reward of bad behavior, but you know.
Good punch, really.
Yes.
Imagine that.
Okay. Next, next is our property tax collection, is next, sir?
In January, we collected $4,811,127 on our property taxes and that brought us to just over 74%. Slightly behind where we were as of January of last year, but not concerning. Well, definitely, we'll probably have another good month of February and at that point, they're usually mostly collected. Any questions about that? Okay, next are the financial reports. First is general fund. And so five months through the year, we would expect to be about 42% spent on our budget. And you can see we're overall on our general fund budget about 38.8%. So we're in a good place, I think, as far as our budget goes for general fund. Any questions about that report? And then the next is the debt service fund. Not a lot of activity besides those tax revenue collections. We did make those payments, not last week, but the week before that, when we were here. Our first payments are in February and so those were made, so you'll see those on next month's report. Any questions about debt service? Next is the food service report. And so you can see that federal program revenue continues to grow in excess of where it was last year, of course, because all the kids are eaten for free. And I did pass this out, so this was what Carrie was discussing, I passed this out to your table. And so that shows you the formula for our district, the amount that we're expecting. We're not entirely sure when we will be paid these funds. These are intended to address funding shortfall, so we don't have to spend it on anything specific. It's just to help with that fund balance. And the general fund has had to supplement the food service fund in those early months of this year to cover payroll and expenses and so hopefully we can recoup some of that back to the general fund. The dates as far as this, what they told us in that presentation, June 30th would be the earliest that dates would be, that the funds would be received. And January 31st of next year, so a whole year from now is when they have to expend them all. So I wouldn't be surprised if we don't receive them until then. But we should be able to go ahead and report the revenue this year since it can be estimated and it is due to us. And that's something I'll check with our auditors to make sure that they're going with us reporting that. But yes, and that's, that's how that calculation worked out. And so it's $178,494 we're expecting.
Any other questions from there?
Okay, and then next is Club Excel. And so they continue to do pretty well. Their revenue, of course, is down compared to last year, of course, because of COVID. But otherwise, their fund continues to do pretty well.
Did we see an increase in January?
Participation.
Did everybody, did everybody came there?
Cory, participation in Club Excel.
I mean, it's still pretty steady. We saw a slight increase, but it's not drastic.
She did, she was able to hire.
Yes.
Some more people because, and I think it helped with our interest there.
So it wasn't like.
So there's no more waiting list, correct? So there's no more waiting list, correct? On, on speeded. Yep, no more speeded on the line, good.
Okay, and the last financial report is the financial monitoring of your school board goals. So you just can see those expenses aligned by function to each of your goals. Any questions about that report? Then we have monthly and year-to-date status of special revenue funds. So this was not much activity actually in our special revenue funds other than our normal payroll activity that runs through those funds per year. Any questions about that report? And then next, the next one is the check register. Any questions about the check register?
So back to the USDA thing, will it just help captive again really pretty much? If we get it paid or not?
Right, yes, yeah, we'll get it paid sometime between the end of June, the end of next January.
Sorry to go back. I'm sorry to talk about, sorry to talk about. Oh, no.
Yes, it's better than, definitely better than nothing.
Well, especially what we have served the whole time. You know, you'd think you'd get a little reward for that, but.
Yeah, right, but it's like Carrie said, they're really a district that didn't serve, got rewarded more because of that bigger difference.
We did the right.
But we did the right.
We got rewarded. This is strange, districts that didn't serve are getting anything.
We've had the whole time and did not stop.
Right.
Yes, and that was right by our head.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Metzger? Okay, you've got our police department report there for you. Any questions on that?
Tom Brady back today?
Today, yeah.
Yes, sir, today is his first day back.
He doing all right?
He is.
Yes, sir.
Good.
He's happy to be back.
Glad to have him back.
Yeah.
Her body. Any other questions? Hey, you've got our calendar of events. And of course, you know, for the first time in history, we've got girls and the girls and boys basketball both made the playoffs this year. Tomorrow night, Cory, 7 o'clock.
Great fight.
Great fight. Our boys are going to be playing. First time in 39 years.
Are you going to have?
Is it 39 or 35?
32 or 35?
39.
Are you going to have a send-off?
We should be.
They're doing a send-off.
We're doing a send, tomorrow afternoon, I think starting at 1:00.
At 1:00?
I believe.
I think they'll be back here at 2:00.
Yeah, they go back here at 2:00.
Here at 2:00 if you want some more wine.
We've got shakers and everything.
Okay.
Okay.
Pom-poms, sorry.
I'm thinking shakers.
I don't, I don't have pom-poms in Louisiana.
Thank you. But they have some, every now and then, I'll go back to those ways, Louisiana ways. Okay. So, and then you've got our other activities coming up. You can see just soccer, basketball. You've got our baseball and softball are starting. Also, when it plays, they're going to be performing coming up. So we've got lots of different things going on. We are going to be, we originally, if you see, we have virtual open houses scheduled, but we're going to push those actually back to the week after spring break. And the reason for that is because of last week. We're going to be, and Jolynn, can you want to just kind of talk to that a little bit? Why we're doing that? And this was on here prior to that decision because, of course, from last week, everything happened.
Our campus and teachers were planning or preparing virtual things with students, that students making presentations. And since we've lost a whole week of students not being there, we want to give the teachers some additional time to make some, put some presentations together to send out for the families since we actually won't be allowing people in the building. So we'll give them a little bit more time to work on that.
Okay, any questions? And of course, our open houses are virtual this year anyway because of COVID. So it makes it a little bit easier for our staff to be able to do that. Okay, the next, this tonight, we have Nichols Middle School. It's going to be the campus that we will, that will be giving you a presentation. We've got several recognition that we're going to, that will happen. And then we'll go in, so now we'll go into our agenda items. We've got subject A. So we've got our minutes from our previous meeting in January. And then, I'm sorry, we've got our budget amendment, Ms. Metzger.
Yes, we have one amendment request from Joshua High School. It is just reclassifying student $400 from function 36 to function 11. So that's some student travel money that's not going to be used because of COVID. And they're going to be purchasing some items for the classroom that they had, that they have some needs there. Whiteboards, document cameras, and student desks for classrooms.
And then we've got a fund purchase over $50,000.
Yes, this is to GovConnection for the purchase of 1,300 Chromebooks. These are replacements for Chromebooks that we already have that are coming to their end of life. 250,000 of this is coming out of our INA instructional materials allotment funds. And 72,740 is local budget funds that was budgeted in the technology budget. The total PO is $322,750.
How many Chromebooks wait out?
I cannot give you that exact number, but we do have, we have enough Chromebooks where we can have one-to-one. We're students, there's enough of those now. We do have a big order that we're waiting to come in that hasn't, because of the vendor that we've always used. Those just have not been available. Districts across the state are having those same issues, but there are enough devices.
What is the limit at one wall? Pretty much, pretty much cost of that.
We're getting very close to that. We did have an order just came in, that came in yesterday or maybe it came in today because Chad was talking about this. So now all of our kindergarten has two Chromebook carts, second grade has two Chromebook carts at every campus. And then we have an order, one of the orders we're waiting on is for the first, for first grade. So they'll have two Chromebook carts. And then we have plans just to continue to add to that. And then everyone else has Chromebook carts in their classrooms.
And one of the things, just even with like with the remote, comes into the network availability. So if kids were at home with that, that's the other issue, is having access to Wi-Fi, which not all of our, you know, we don't have enough hotspots for all of our kids. But the ones who want, we're getting close to, but then when they take them home, be able to have that Wi-Fi. And I know that there are a lot of bills out there with the legislature on that to provide that.
The legislature's big push is that operation connectivity across the state to make sure that every, every household has that availability to connect.
Yeah, so, but we're working on getting there, yes.
A lot of moving parts in that that a lot of people don't understand. It's not, it's state, it's federal. It's us, if we can provide, but it's.
You can't have.
To do the actual one-on-one.
And just a, just a whole, a lot of districts actually are, are going away from the one-to-one, sending the, actually sending the devices home with students because of the, you just lose so many of your devices. You lose, not only do the devices, you lose those, you lose chargers. I mean, I just, I think back as we were getting our devices back, as we were doing virtual and we would get those devices back, they come back in atrocious conditions. And so some of them, we just had to, to just get rid of, we couldn't use them anymore because of the conditions they come back in. Several of them, people just moved away and we never got those back. So we just used to have those kinds of issues. And some of the districts who do have the one-to-one issues that they have is like, oh, the kid takes them home, but they don't bring it back the next day. Or when they do bring it back, it's not charged. And so how can I, as a teacher, have this lesson in class that we planned? Either you didn't bring your device or it's not charged up. So now I'm going to move you somewhere in the classroom by flood. So it's just a lot of logistical things like that to consider.
So we're working on, just working on all those logistics.
And just, actually, a meeting was supposed to happen with, with ninth grade and the high school, which she put a parent committee, a committee with some parents on it too, to look at that one-to-one for, for nine through 12. But we have new schedules now.
Any other questions? Okay. Subject B is the school auditor, Ms. Metzger.
Yes, so it's February, and that means it's time to approve our school auditor. So we are asking you to approve Snow Bear Williams again. They, we have a wonderful working relationship with them. They do a wonderful job for us. They're very efficient. They worked well with us during all the COVID issues over the summer and during our past audit. And so the engagement letter is there for you to read through and what are the potential approvals, Snow Bear Williams?
Any questions on that? Okay, next, Mr. Hickerson, if you'll talk about the calendar process. We've got the approval for the 21, 22 calendar. And we hope that this is the only time we have to bring this up.
So the calendar, so we took it to our campuses. Sent them three different options, let them vote on their options through the campus improvement committees. And then what the majority had chose was option one, which is what you have in front of you right here. And this has mutual orientation, the 4th of August to the 6th of August. Has a first day of school for students starting on that Thursday, the 19th. The one major difference than this actual calendar than what was approved last year during this time is that because Christmas falls on Saturday, we would actually go and have that half day on that Tuesday of that Christmas week, so the 21st. It has your staff development, professional development days built in after each six weeks. Also has your bad weather's day, weather days built in. Then what that does, pushing that back to that Tuesday in December, it actually allows the teachers and students to have a little bit more time in January and not have to report back on that Monday, that Saturday, or that Tuesday, the 3rd, the students. So it allows them to have a couple extra days. And teachers would actually report on the 5th, which is that Wednesday. Students would actually start back on that Thursday. But it does push back school two days at the end of the year and pushes school back to get out on the 26th of May. So that's really the major difference.
So it's pretty much unanimous. Also, look at this new look.
I love it, I love the look.
Thank you.
I love the color coding and stuff.
And he did that, and it makes it, he did a great job.
We tried to, tried to take out all the writing and try to kind of.
Make it easier for you.
Put the grading periods on there. So if you have questions about when the six weeks ends, it's on there.
I love that idea of giving, giving the staff three different options and letting them, letting them vote on it.
So they really, so it starts out in November. Mr. Hickerson sent an email out asking for any suggestions. He put together the three calendars based on the suggestions that they gave. And then they each had an opportunity to vote. So, and then the campus, you know, so they get a real hand in that. And that really helps, so. Any questions? Okay, next. The next, subject D is to consider a special call board meeting. So we've got, this is when our board election is going to occur on May 1st. We have to canvas those votes. And they must be canvassed by May 12th. But our board meeting, our May board meeting is May 17th. So we're asking you to consider a special call board meeting for May 10 in order to canvas those votes, so that we can follow them in that timeline. Any questions on that? Okay. Subject E, consider resolution of the board recording protective unpaid leave during the COVID-19 pandemic. Ms. Danmard's going to talk to you about that.
Okay, so I'm bringing this to you tonight more or less to assist staff who have to miss a lot of work due to COVID-19. We have families who have multiple exposures in their house. For example, they may have, they may miss once and they're out with their child, and then another child gets it later. Or the school closes, you know, they have to, they have to quarantine because they were around a child at school. And so they don't have someone to watch their children, so they're having to, you know, take the time off. And it may not be our school, it may be a separate situation. But in that case, we've got a policy in D C local that states that district shall terminate, or shall recommend termination to an employee that has five excessive absences. And so this resolution I'm bringing to you to help those employees who are out due to multiple reasons of COVID who may be considered in neutral absence control. And so this resolution is, basically is asking for the board to allow for those absences to not be counted towards the neutral absence control policy. They would have to provide documentation, so it wouldn't just be on, you know, the word, or make, you know, what formal process to make sure that they're providing this documentation, that it is COVID-related. And I'm asking that this, this go along with our expanded paid sick leave that is set to expire on June 4th.
Any questions on this? This is just to help our staff in COVID situation.
You just, it's a native and quarantined, so.
Exactly. And that can help them.
There are no, no, all of their own.
So in order for us to be in compliance and be able to follow policy, you guys are asking you to approve this resolution to do that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Danmard. The next, we've got one of our policy updates, the 10th, the update 116. Mr. Hickerson, who knows this, what he did as he took this and sent it to all of the staff who were affected by this. And do you want to just kind of visit, just let them know? Basically, there were no changes.
Yeah, there were, there were no drastic changes. It was a lot of revisions in the wording, elimination of words, and no major drastic changes to the actual policies other than just the revision of words.
So we're just, that local policy update. Any questions on that? You'll just stay there, Mr. Hickerson?
All right.
Because now we're going to talk about, this is, these are our approval for the attendance waivers for January 11th. So if you'll just explain that for the board?
Okay, so TDA allows you to basically submit a waiver for lower than this date, it's 10 percentage points lower than what your ADA was for the entire year. So these campuses on that day, and that was the day after that Sunday, we had that snow. It was that Monday where our attendance was very low on all these campuses. So all these fall under that, that 10-point threshold. Which our ADA was 96.4. I don't have it in front of me right now, but it's 96.4 something. And so all these will fall under that, so.
It's 96.4, yeah.
Yeah.
And so they were all 10 percentage, so we wrote them out for their F equally. Done, these also were brought to our district improvement committee. They've approved them, they've got that stat, and then we're bringing them to you guys. And if you guys were asking that you approve those for us tonight and then tomorrow, Mr. Hickerson will submit those to TDA for approval. Any questions on that? Okay, so we have several of those, and you can see there. And so those are our agenda items for tonight. And so I have a few other things that I'd like to go over with you in our workshop. First, I'd like to call Ms. Danmard to come back up. You see that you've got international travel procedures. So this is a change of topics in our last board meeting. And we, in order to comply with this, I'm going to have her explain this to you. And this has already been sent out to our staff so that they were well there in prior to plans for spring break, with spring break in the air.
So on January 26th, the president signed an executive order regarding international travel. I did double-check some of this with our group of CDC to make sure we were following, you know, the guidance on this. And so if an employee travels by air, sea, or car, they will be required to report to their supervisor that they are going to be taking this trip. Board policy D C local does talk about requesting permission for time off. And so supervisors, if they felt like it was going to cause an issue with the effectiveness of the program, they could deny the request. But sometimes we have occurrences where there's a death in the family and they're, they've traveled to Mexico. That's generally where the travel has been. Or in this case, we have spring break coming up. So we wanted to make sure that we are letting our staff know that we're not telling them they're not allowed to travel internationally, but we're forewarning them that when they do come back, they're going to have to quarantine in accordance with this new executive order. So they'll have to get first permission from their supervisor. Then they'll have to, when they return, they'll have to report to us, to Human Resources. Then they'll have to, when they return, they'll have to report to us, to Human Resources, using an international travel form. That's all done electronically. And so we will have them complete that form and we'll document the date they return. And they will have two quarantining options. One will be 10 days without testing, which they can return on day 11, which is generally what we're doing, you know, as quarantine the C D C has set up. If they want to take a test, they can take a test no sooner than the third day and no later, the third, between the third and the fifth days when they have to test. And if they test negative, then they can return on day eight. And so during that time period, we're letting them know that if they choose to take the trip, they're not going to be eligible for expanded paid sick leave. That was their choice. And so as soon as I got, you know, word of this executive order, I wanted to go and put that out there. That way, we weren't paying for these employees to go on a cruise and then come back and
Be quarantined.
And be quarantined and get another eight days, you know.
And she also did check with our legal counsel as well.
Yes, she did.
Just to make sure what, you know, how should we follow this? And they approved all of these things, so we just put that procedure out. And I know that other school districts are doing this as well, just to stay in compliance so that we're following these C D C requirements and the president's order, executive order. And so we just wanted to get this information out to our staff to make sure that this was out in enough time for their preparation with spring break coming up.
And we also put this together in Spanish too, so it was a way everybody was able to have the information in front of them.
Any questions? We just wanted you guys to be aware so that this went out and why and what procedures were in place.
That's a total contributor, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. Even driving, it's.
Well, how did it prove to get away with?
Yeah, I wondered, did he take a test when he got back?
He got four days.
So we can have that different rules. Billy didn't go in that train.
How do you, how do you, I guess the question in general with students who travel out of the country?
Well, we talked about that.
Yes. When I talked to legal about this, they still, this is C D C. So it still has to be followed. But they said with the amount of student population that we have, it would not be wise for the district to sit there and try to put their thumb on it. It is out there, it's an executive order. But being that this is our staff and they've paid to work, we've paid them to work for us, therefore it can have a little bit more control in that matter. And so really, as far as our students goes, we haven't, we have, we've gone with what our legal has said and kind of kept it back a little bit.
Right, okay.
So then we are providing, the way we looked at it also is that because there are paid employees and we, they have to be here for the kids, that environment that we are providing for the students to be in is following all of the orders that are laid out for them. That was our reasoning, and then double checking the legal as well. That's all, so.
Yeah, I'm definitely not questioning the authority whenever it comes to employees. I just didn't know for my safety.
Yeah, and we talked about it, but it's like, so it's hard for us to know. Not everybody's going to tell us if they're going to.
It's hard to police that with all the students.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm not advocating policing either. I just said if there were any guidelines, that's all.
Not, not, not as far as the procedure goes, but as far as, you know, if the principals were to adhere with it, they could, they could say, hey, this has been the C D C and quarantine, but then we would put them on our quarantine documentation spreadsheet.
Any other questions? Okay. Also, you were just going to, I know that we'd let you know that we did offer vaccines to our staff, not require them. At this point, we had 250 staff members.
Little, we've had a little over 200 to sign up. We have extended the, I guess, the vaccination to vaccinate to 150 thus far. Fred and I have been talking with Dr. Steve Martin and they're not opening it to just everybody at this time. It was first those that were high risk. And so we looked at those first, got them an invitation. And then as of this last week, it was teachers, like classroom teachers. We understand we do have service workers and instructional aides, but they wanted to focus on the teachers. And so they set up a special option for school staff. When you sign up, you have to pick an option. And so we, I extended that to 62 employees Thursday or Friday of this week, this past week. And then we have about 42 left on our list. So out of over 200, we have extended the invitation to vaccinate them with about 42 remaining in hopes that we'll have those maybe in the next couple of weeks.
Just giving you guys an update, we're kind of where we are on that. Okay, any questions? Okay, next. Zoe is going to talk to you guys about just some website traffic improvements and changes. Just if you've noticed, like your school board has kind of moved and why. That is why those changes have been made. And I just want to visit with you guys on that.
Good evening. Yes, I actually sat in on a webinar a few weeks ago talking about website improvements. You know, when families do Google searches to learn more about districts, that's what they go to is Google. And there were some, I found out some interesting information. There are third-party companies out there that are trying to take advantage of school districts' names. And they actually approached me a few days later after I made these changes, just telling me to sign up with them. And we pay them money and they'll get our, the district name out there, give us a little more exposure. But what they're actually doing is basically a play-to-pay, pay-to-play scheme where charter schools nearby can also use our name to their advantage. So if you do a Google search with this company, they're called Niche. If you do a Google search, basically the district will come up, but charter schools will also come up nearby, which kind of gives them a fair advantage because we're paying to, you know, promote our district. So I made some keyword of search engine optimization updates. And I moved the school board tab underneath our district. One thing they recommend, recommended is to really promote your academics and programs. So I created a new tab for academics and all of our programs. That way, when people do a Google search for Josh Y S D, academics, that's the first thing that'll come up. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention in case you were wondering where the school board section went.
So when you see those rankings on the N I, it's N I C H E.
N I C H E, niche.
Yes, they rank those schools. That might be why, you know, if we're not ranked up there, it's because we didn't pay money to do that.
Yeah. An example they gave was Austin I S D. If you typed in Austin I S D on Niche, all these Harmony, Idea charter schools would show up.
How much money are we talking about?
I believe it was like 50,000, something like that. Those are ridiculous amounts. And the funny thing is, is they sent me an email a few days later asking us to sign up and so we could promote the district nearby.
So Zoe's taking care of that. But I just wanted you guys to know, if you see, like, school board's not up on that top line. It's under our district, that's why. So academics could take that spot.
Well, academics needs to take that spot.
Absolutely.
It kind of puts, it'll put our district up when people Google it, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Now, I want to tell Zoe along with Carrie and Blake, I mean, you guys have all stepped up and you, once again, played something we've never had before. And great job on getting the communication.
Thank you.
Is it feel weird being in front of the camera?
It is.
Okay, next, I'm going to call Jolene. She's going to talk to you guys just about our in-person numbers now that we've gotten our enrollment back, kind of where we stand, and also that online testing with star testing. There's some new things out there that are coming our way.
All right, the first one I'm going to talk to you about is our enrollment. So I did give you the very respectful yellow heading. And so you can see that right now we only have 121 virtual students. And so that's, that's from the beginning of the four, six weeks to the end of the four, six weeks. So we actually had 10 students who have returned face-to-face since we last shared these numbers. So that's good. They're just kind of trickling back little by little now. But these are, you know, the ones that are, that are virtual are those ones that stayed because it was a medical reason. And so those are the only ones that are allowed to be virtual. And that doesn't include any of our quarantine numbers. So it is made, instruction goes so much smoother in the classroom with the teachers and student engagement. So it's great having all those students out. All right, the next thing I want to talk to you about is our district is transitioning to online testing. So the last legislative session in 2019, House Bill 39 and 6, it did mandate that all state assessments must be online by the year, by the year 2022 and 2023. So that's not this year, it's not the next year, but it's the next year where all state assessments have to be online, all star assessments, all those things, so third through 12th grade. So as we began to, you know, begin to start thinking about that and transition, T E A sent out across the state, T E A sent out surveys to every district kind of asking like what is their readiness level? And so we had completed that for our district along with everyone else. And then they, then T E A came out with the accountability clause. Okay, we're not going to, accountability is not going to count this year. So we decided as, as a district leadership team, meeting and talking and talking with Dr. Rimmer Schneider and all the kind of trainings and webinars you can sit in, that we would go ahead and make this transition to do online testing this year because it's our, it's a risk-free opportunity to do it. Because if we don't do it this year, we're forced to do it next year to really get that practice because the next year it has to happen. So we kind of weighed all the advantages of that and I've listed them here. There were some other districts in Region 11 that did studies comparing online testing versus paper testing and they did not see significant differences between the students' results. So we talked to the technologies department specifically and to look, do we have the capacity for that? Do we have the devices and do we have the bandwidth? Then, yes, we do, we will be able to do that. And one of the things that T E A is also doing to help with this is that there won't be specific dates that a test has to take place. You get windows, so you might get a window of a week. So then that also allows districts to facilitate this online testing. All of our campuses are familiar with online assessments already because they give teletalks and many of them have already been doing the interim assessments, which T E A has had out for a couple of years now. They're like little shorter practice assessments. So our teachers and students are familiar with those. On the actual STAR platform, T E A has made lots of improvements with that as far as making it more advantageous to take online. So when I'm looking at those pair of passages as a student, I'm looking at two different reading passages and I'm having to make some connections there. The questions actually stay right there, so I'm not having to click this click. Or if you got the paper test, you're like digging back to the question. So that's one of the advantages there. The dictionary tool is right there, it's readily accessible. So kids aren't going to have to go get a dictionary, look up the word. It's going to be right there in the online format. The scientific and graphic calculators are embedded in the test for the. About is that our third and fourth grade kids, if they didn't test last year, or better, didn't test, they'll never know any difference. Like they'll just, online is just going to be how they get used to, that's how they take tests. Many students across the state, as they've been surveyed, say they prefer online testing. As far as being able to handle all these paper booklets, this is going to be less germs too as far as all of our testing coordinators and teachers out there. All those paper booklets that we have to worry about and count and all of that. It definitely improves test security, so all of our test. Online for teachers to teach. And when you take the test online, the scoring comes in faster. So those were all the advantages. But still, even after. I'm curious about this because I, you know, I'm very conservative with this. I'm like, oh, okay, guess what are we going to do? But, you know, how are we going to roll this out to our teachers to get them to, you know, be on board with this? But it actually was phenomenal. We talked to our principals about it in January and then we immediately met with the testing coordinators and then the principals that week, same week, talked to their staff. We did not get any negative feedback at all. Everyone is like, okay, we'll do it. Let's just, you know, we'll jump in there and do it. So I'm very excited about that happening and, you know, I'm sure there's going to be headaches just like there always is, but it'll be a great year to go ahead and try that since accountability.
Are we going to start the benchmarks?
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Hudson. Yes, we are going to, actually our benchmarks are ready to do in the spring. We're going to go ahead and do those online so that our students are fully prepared into what the STAR test is going to look like. So it'll help with it. Thank you for bringing that up.
So we just wanted you guys to let you know, this is moving into the 21st district. Okay, thank you, Ms. Ossberger. Just did three things that I just wanted to touch base with you on real quick. Staff appreciation banquet is scheduled for April 30th. And we are planning on doing it in the stadium again. And, but we're going to do everything. We're going to have our auction, we're going to do everything that way. That way we can socially distance. If for some reason things should change or we can move it to the gym, we'll do that. But that's our plan. We also have May 7th scheduled as our makeup just in case of weather with it being out there. So we've got that planned, which is the following Friday. But April 30th, we always say the very last Friday of April. So just kind of letting you guys know that. Graduations, we're planning on having those both in the stadium again. New Horizon, we're going to plan in the stadium if things change and we can kind of come back together in the auditorium, we will do that. I think that's what they prefer to do in speaking with us long. But right now, we know that that's our plan, the stadium for graduations. And May 28th is, and we'll be getting those dates out too. May 28th is high school and then that Tuesday, June 2nd. Is that right, is New Horizon? Okay, and then also prom, Ms. Neal and her staff, they're scheduled for. But we're planning, trying to move forward. That's a, it's not a requirement, it's an option if the kids choose to go, but. Yes, June 2nd. Is that a two?
It's the Wednesday.
Need to double check. Let me, let me pull.
June 1st is a two-day.
Yeah, let me see if I'm thinking of that in my calendar.
Can we change New Horizon to the evening now instead of afternoon?
Yes. Yes. It's June 1st, thank you. I knew it was the Tuesday, yes. Okay. And hopefully we can stick with those dates too, like we did last year. Any questions? That's all I have for the workshop.
Okay. All right, just kind of, we'll call our workshop to move into, right, come back at 6:30, 25:00. to 4. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and talk to meeting carders. We do have a form present and it has been due to the State of Texas, 6:35. Eric, will you offer indication, please?
Yes, sir, I will. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us here today and we ask that you just continue to bestow your blessings on our district, to watch over our staff, our students, our community, our families. We also ask tonight that you just be with one of our staff members, Ms. Rowe from Nichols. We just received some devastating news about her husband and we just ask that you provide her the strength and comfort right now and her family, that strength and comfort that she needs. We also ask, Lord, that you just fill us with the wisdom, the knowledge, the right judgment and the understanding as we make the decisions to move forward in the best interest of all of our students, of all of our staff and our community. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I think you have some guests to perform our
I sure do. We have some students who are going to be here. We're gonna have them up on the screen from Nichols Middle School and they will be leading us in our pledge tonight.
If I, if I click on it, it's gonna start.
Okay, so let me read about these students first. Okay, first we have Folo Olajide. She is the daughter of Lara and Taiwo Olajide and she is an eighth grade student at Nichols Middle School. And Folo enjoys drawing, art, reading, eating snacks and the best trombone in, she says, she's the best trombone in honor band. And so also she is a go-getter, very competitive and likes to read. She enjoys mentoring other students. And so we want to thank Folo for joining us tonight and leading us in the pledge. And we, we know she's watching with her family and so we are also going to provide Mr. Rosatelli with a pen for Folo after for thank, for helping us tonight. Next, we have Jacob Wright. Jacob is the son of Tiffany Baird, Rusty Reed and Josh Wright. And Jacob is an eighth grade student at Nichols Middle School. Jacob enjoys, his hobbies and interests are band, sports, jazz. He's played football and basketball at Nichols. He enjoys all sports. He's, he's also the best trombone player in honor band. One of the smartest and respectful students in the school. Jacob is very independent, all honors, all As, science and band, UIL, or science, UIL and band, has been accepted to the associate's degree program at Hill College and he loves to read. Two outstanding students. Let's give both of these students a round of applause. And if you guys will stand and join in, join in on the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the American people, and to the citizens of this land. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Josh Wright, Steve, we are highly proud of your model of educational excellence.
Jacob and Folo and we certainly appreciate it. And Mr. Rosatelli will have pens for you tomorrow morning. Let's give these students another round of applause.
Republican, Republican superintendent's report.
Yes, sir. During our workshop, we reviewed the following superintendent's reports, the enrollment report, attendance report, ADA report, our child nutrition report, our property tax collection, our monthly financial report, monthly and year-to-date status of special revenue funds, our check register, our police department report, our JISC calendar, her begins. And now we've got our campus presentation from Nichols, Nichols Middle School, so I will call up Mr. Rosatelli.
This year we wanted to add our band program and we're gonna bring a small section of play for you, but hopefully we can. So instead of, our band director, Terry Smoot, and she's gonna show you a little slideshow about her.
First of all, I'm super honored to be able to talk about our program with you guys. You guys here in this room, you guys are the ones that make things happen for us and we couldn't do what we do without you. So thank you very much for all the support you give us. One of the unique things about Nichols is that, like, we got to start this program. We got to decide what it was gonna be and that very first year, the kids decided that it was gonna be a tradition of excellence and we've done nothing since. And so we started that first year and we were playing, you know, music at the level that the state would like for us to play at. And since then, we have just upped the bar every single year and now we're playing music that some high schools would struggle with and we're super, super excited about that. So, so we have a little presentation for you. Is it this one? Okay. We have some of our students, actually, we can tell you all they love, how great we think our program is, but we have actually some students that had some things to say about it, so we'd love to share that with you.
So I've been a little bit working and they all kind of liked it because, um, help me more discipline and, uh, it all we want to be better. I'm gonna be around the band and playing pieces because it's so fun and it's so awesome how everything goes together perfectly and I just love band. I'm gonna be around the band and playing pieces.
My dear girl, they deserve, they carry them together, they're all playing tunes on, or it seems to, it just, it sounds so amazing when they're playing.
So this next slide here, actually, since we couldn't perform, we're currently working on for you, we have some snippets for our Christmas concert. We have three different levels of bands at Nichols and so we have just a short little snippet from each group. And we did do some narrated pieces this year, so they'll hear some kind of non-traditional things, not just your standard Christmas tunes. So this is our concert band. All right, next is our symphonic band. And then our honor band, who did something very untraditional and actually kind of scary. So you guys, you can imagine they had a lot of fun with that. Another one of our beginners.
They're coming to show and they'll give us, they also choose, uh, a new child and one band.
First, what does band mean? Band means a lot of things, especially for these things. One, speaking to my friends and getting to chat with them. Two, getting to rehearsals and shows, that's one of their parts. Three, learning who knows and songs, that's another part, too. Second, uh, what does my favorite member of the band? My favorite member of the band, and I will never forget this, and I'm all tired of, is when I first played, I kinda had to make the first G. That would be my number. And how does band feel? Band is serious, you feel amazing because it's the, it's the, I call the best part of my
All right, so one of the big, big things that we've seen a lot of success in is all region. And so we first started off, and first of all, I'll go over with you, but it's, we are in a very, very, very competitive region, one of the most competitive regions in the entire state. But every year, including this year, with our gaps that we had at the beginning, we've gone up in our numbers every single year. So this is just kind of some stats on it. Our, our region, it goes all the way from around here to Granbury and Weatherford, it picks up Alito and it goes around and it's Saginaw and Keller. So it's a lot of schools that our kids compete against in music. It's, it's quite, quite competitive and a lot of these schools are, or these districts like Keller has like a ton of middle schools and they are very, very competitive. So just a kind of a picture of that's who our kids compete with. It's a, it's a very large area and so for them to be successful is amazing. So this is where our numbers are with all region students. So we started off when the school opened, we got one kid in the first year, went to three the next year and then went to five this year. And then of course, the kids were all like, oh, we have to do seven now. And I was like, eh, whatever. So we went up to 10 this year and doubled our number. And not only that, seven out of those 10 ranked into the top all-region band and three out of those 10 got first chair on their instrument out of all of those schools. And it's pretty amazing. And here's their picture, I guess we're doing recognitions on them tonight as well. And here's our final
I was like, music, I asked someone to record it and I was always looking for that. With the music today, I was never really singing and I never really finished anything or listening and I just keep on going until I picked up a time for the honor band. Wait, after the, it was very strange. I finally managed to play my first part, I escaped, which eventually became a musical, which eventually became a rock musical. I always push myself, push myself to be my better brother. And they help us to push ourselves because if it pushes you, even when you work or you push, it pushes, that's why I work.
All right, so I truly, truly wish we could have actually done a performance for you tonight that would just would have been, I would have loved to do that and I'm sorry we couldn't do that, but thank you so much for watching our presentation and thank you so much for your support.
Great job. We're very, very proud of your students. Great job. Thank you, Mr. Rosatelli.
Very good job. Under adverse conditions, not being in school for a whole week, we all listen to you. I appreciate you. Moving into recognition.
Yes, sir. So So we've got several recognitions tonight. And first, I'd like to call up, we've got our Jack Harvey Award recognition. And I would like to call up Ms. Cameron Allred. Come on up. And also, Mr. Patterson, come on up with Ms. Allred. So let me tell you about Ms. Allred. Ms. Allred is an eighth grade science teacher at Wathlin Middle School. And we are recognizing her because Cameron is the 2021 recipient of the Weatherford College Jack Harvey Fellowship Award. Mr. Patterson says Cameron is exemplary because of her creativity, passion for teaching, and her ability to adapt to different learning needs. Cameron shows creativity in managing lessons to connect with her students. She genuinely cares about each of her students and is consistently looking for ways to encourage, connect, and relate to them. She was instrumental in creating project-based learning for students to use during our intervention and extension time of the day. She is always looking for new and different ways to teach her students that will engage and interest them. We are blessed and fortunate to have Cameron Allred on our campus. And just so you know, I wanted to say a little bit also about Ms. Allred. She has done an outstanding job. One of the things that we work with, with our principals monthly, with all of our teachers, is our professional learning communities. And we talk once a month with our principals and really focusing on the extensions during our RTI time. And last year, when we were meeting together prior to the Zoom meetings, Ms. Allred came and she did a presentation for our principals and the way that, and the things that she did to lead her campus. She is an outstanding teacher. We are very proud to have Ms. Allred in our district and congratulate her for this Jack Harvey Award. And she went to Weatherford College, she and Mr. Patterson, a few weeks ago to receive her award. And we also have a plaque that we have out in our lobby and her name will be added to that plaque and will be there forever as that Jack Harvey Award winner for the 2021 school year. So let's give Ms. Allred a round of applause. Congratulations. And we're going to get, we've got your picture up there. We're going to put your picture on the website as well. Congratulations, Ms. Allred. Thank you for what you do. Okay, next, we've got some varsity football players who we'd like to recognize. And you've got their pictures up there. Again, because of COVID, we're doing our recognitions a little bit differently this year when we have groups. And so this group is being recognized for their all-district honors. And the all-district honors go out to Tyler Stone, first-team wide receiver; Noah Smith, first-team punter; Matthew Roberson, second-team inside linebacker; Mario Miranda, second-team kicker; and Chris Haught, second-team offensive tackle. Our all-Johnson County team is Mario Miranda, Mario Miranda, Matthew Roberson, Noah Smith, and Tyler Stone. We're very proud of all of these boys. Let's give them a round of applause. Coach Dorman, we've got pins for these boys. If you, after the meeting, if you'll get those pins and you can hand out to those boys tomorrow for us, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Our next recognition is our Nichols Middle School band. And these are those honor band recipients, or all-region bands, sorry, recipients that Ms. Smoot was just talking about. So our teachers and sponsors at Nichols Middle School in the band area are Ms. Terry Rhodes, I mean, Ms. Terry Smoot, Mr. Brian Bass, and Mr. Lonnie Foster, and Mr. Trent Fox. Let me just talk a little bit about, add on to some of the things that Ms. Smoot spoke about earlier. The NMS band students participated in the all-region process this year and we're pleased to, and we are pleased to announce that our program doubled our record placing six out of 22 schools. That's outstanding. We had 10 students make the all-region band with three of these students earning first chair on their instrument. Seven out of the 10 students placed into the all-region honor band, which is the top band. Region 30 has some of the strongest music programs in the state and will easily have over 1,000 students audition. And the all-region band is truly an honor to earn a seat in. So the students that you see up here in this picture that earned a seat are as follows. Taryn Lane, honor band flute. Riley Hush, honor band clarinet, first chair. Addie Argumenes, honor band clarinet. Mallory Goodwin, symphonic band clarinet. Shane Waits, honor band contra-bass clarinet, first chair. Joey Buell, honor band tenor saxophone, first chair. Aiden Gresham, honor band trumpet. Nathan Paramo Guerrero, symphonic band trumpet. Leighton Hayden, honor band French horn. And Jacoby Smith, symphonic band trombone. Let's give all of these students a round of applause. And Ms. Smoot, before you leave, if you will come up to get pins for these students also so that you can hand out to them tomorrow morning. Thank you. And those are our recognitions for tonight.
Okay, we'll move into the public forum, part of our board. Board of urgent comments, citizens of the district or employees, anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group, and do so at this time. The board asks that comments pertaining to public transportation issues be the longer than three minutes. We have two signed up. Start with Mr. Miller.
Hi, my name is Marshall Miller. I have two students at Elder Elementary. I'm also very involved with the youth sports here in Joshua. I'm the baseball commissioner for Joshua Baseball Association and the town representative for Joshua P D Football Association. It's my first time coming to a school board meeting, so bear with me. I'd like to start off by saying how good a job the school board has done handling this pandemic. I'm constantly reviewing the COVID numbers that the ISD puts out on Facebook. And I can see firsthand how low the infection rate is and how high the recovery rate is. I know that my children are in good hands when they get out of the truck to go into the schools. So I just want to thank all you for that. And thank all the teachers who take care of my kids. Now, the reason I decided to come here today, I think it's time to reevaluate Joshua ISD's COVID policy as a whole. If you're to walk around town, go to local businesses, go to city park, or be present for any of the youth programs around the town, you'll see that a lot of the towns are pretty much over COVID. It's been almost a calendar year since COVID in our country, our state, or city. And at that time, we had no idea what to expect. We closed schools, businesses, we closed social interactions altogether. People voluntarily were masked for the 14 days to slow the spread, to flatten the curve. And now that turned into a couple months now, it's been a calendar year. We know what COVID is now. We have treatments for it and we have a vaccine. It's, I think it's time to loosen up the restrictions a little bit. Getting other kids back to in-person school was a great first start. My kids and kids all over the town have been itching to get back to interacting with their friends and back to normal. A couple weeks ago, my kids came home from school as excited as I've ever seen them, saying, Daddy, guess what? We finally got to play with the other classes today at recess. They were so excited about just that little bit. They're ready to get back to normal. If that alone wasn't enough, Joshua Baseball Association had its highest player turnout this spring that it's ever had. Parents of over 200 baseball players, over 100 softball players decided to put COVID behind them and put their kids first and put them having fun with friends. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying this throughout the COVID policy altogether. I'm just asking, pleading for the board to loosen the policies. I've had an issue with one specific policy that's in the works right now. I won't get into that one. But the other one being the mask policy. On February 11th, the CDC removed surgical masks as an example, an example of personal protective equipment under their promote behaviors that reduce the spread of COVID-19 infection. Not only that, the CDC does not recommend face shields as a way to protect yourself against COVID. So since we're not following CDC guidelines and we're operating on subjective standard, it's time to start considering mask-based, mask-based shields as more of an optional type of standard. On February 12th, CDC also announced, based on data available, in-person learning in schools now being associated with substantial community transmission. Although national COVID cases have risen among children and adolescents, the trend parallels that with adults, meaning that schools are not a superstore. This also means that schools are more safe for children than your normal trip to the grocery store or restaurant or grocery store events. As a member of the executive board for Joshua P D Football Association, kids are in dire need of a place to practice and play football this summer and fall. Last year, we had to make a disappointing and heartbreaking decision to cancel football season for all of Joshua's kids due to the ISD closing the facilities to non-school activities. I completely understand the reasoning behind it. Only a few months out of COVID, so many unknowns, parents. It was a, it was just a really big blow to the youth community as a whole. Just the other day, I read the story of 12-year-old Buena Lita who took his own life because of, and the father, because I'm not representing COVID, killed my son. He blames the lockdowns and the social isolation for the pandemic. The ISD in Las Vegas had a massive increase in suicides due to mental health side of COVID as well. The lockdowns and policies from COVID kill more kids than COVID. So the other reason why I'm here today is to ask that you work for the Youth Football Association or Joshua, allow them to use school facilities for practices and for games. Joshua Baseball Association does not have this issue. The baseball association uses the city fields on, I'm sorry. The baseball station is not a facility, they only use, not only has the city of Joshua been fully supported, the baseball association have practices and games in the city, on city property, but they have also allowed other towns and other teams to come into the community at the risk of spreading COVID. The spring and fall baseball season had zero issues with COVID outbreaks among teams. Parents were responsible for quarantining their players as of whenever an exposure occurred. They were front and about, holding players out of practices due to sicknesses regardless of severity. Teams of 10 to 12 kids, all sitting next to each other in the dugout, sharing dad's hand fighting, weren't kids do, and no team had to be shut down due to COVID outbreak. It's time for COVID to be a thing of passage and it's time for the kids to get back to doing what they love and that's why you like to put your principal.
We're running to the second time coming up. And Mary will get back to you. And we had the other one signing up for the rings.
Do you have a copy, is there enough copies?
Yes, ma'am, there is. There is, sir.
Can you hear me up there? My name is Katie Breams and I'm a resident in Burleson, but my students, my children go to Joshua ISD. I have been graduated from Joshua also. I love this district. I'm also a former educator also. And I want to just bring up some concerns that I have with our boil water notice and the procedures that the school, the school district has adopted regarding the three days of boiling water and not having proper hand washing options. The first thing that I wanted to bring up is the purple, purple heading one. It specifically talks about hand sanitizer not being an appropriate option for us, especially playing outdoors. And to piggyback off of what Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller said, speaking of, you know, loosening the restrictions with COVID, a lot of the kids can't play on playground equipment because of the risk of spreading that. But then, now you're risking other infection risk with not having proper ways to wash hands after playing outside. So since they can't play on equipment, I mean, they're touching the gravel, they're touching the ground, other things that are still risking them for other infections. And the reason that I'm even here in the first place, that it is, I am so passionate about this is because my child has just, is recovering, he hasn't just recovered, he is recovering from a staff infection. That we have no idea how it entered his body. He had seven days of fever. He's a student at North Joshua, 10 years old, healthy. He came home with fever, fever seven days, we ended up in the ER. He had emergency surgery that night because the infection spread to his blood, his bone, his joints. We stayed five days at Cook Children's. He now has a PICC line, IV tube, is hard, receiving antibiotics. So some of the documents I gave you have information about MRSA and MSSA staff. It is very, very dangerous. Like, I mean, I personally thought the only thing dangerous out there right now is COVID. It's not. As a mom who just spent a week at the hospital, it is super scary. So I'm not just coming to complain because I do have options and ideas and suggestions. And I don't think, I had a conversation with Mr. Hickerson, is that right? Mr. Hickerson today? And he, he and I brainstormed on some things and he shared some of the contacts that you are health officials, doctors that are way smarter than myself, that they have come out with and they are working with the school district on. Two things that we talked about in these that have not been mentioned or discussed specifically is possibly using the water in, that's in the school that could be contaminated to wash hands with soapy water and then use hand sanitizer or renting hand washing stations, like that are used with porta-potties at outdoor facilities, outdoor concerts. Another thing that I did some homework on is I got pricing from a local company that supplies these hand wash stations. A lot of them do 400 to 500 hand washings per, per fill of the water compartment. And I mean, I will put my money where my mouth is and I will pay the sponsor at least one school to get hand washing stations or, and another alternative that is beyond baby wipes and hand sanitizer, because that is not enough. Because, and it's not just COVID, it's other infections and other things that are equally dangerous. Because my child could have died from his sepsis and his blood infection. So please consider some other options other than the two that we have. Thank you.
We're running to the second time coming up. And Mary will get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, moving into subject, subject A.
Okay, subject A. I'm running now. I apologize a little. My book's not put together like it normally is because it's a week last week, so I'm just going to get through it a little different. Okay.
We're all happy, we're everything.
Yeah. Consider the consent agenda items. So you've got our consent agenda items, you've got our minutes from our previous meeting on January 18th and on January 20th. You also, we have one budget amendment that Ms. Metzger went over with you from high school, and that is to purchase some whiteboards and some document cameras and some school desks. And then you also have the one purchase over $50,000, and that is for some additional Chromebooks. So my recommendation is that you approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I hear most, most by Ms. Pruitt. There is a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or questions? All flowers. Sit up. Subject B, considered school auditor for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Okay, so Ms. Metzger also went over this with you in our workshop. We are recommending Snow Garrett Williams. They are. We are recommending Snow Garrett Williams, their auditor. They, we've used them for the past 15 years. They do an outstanding job. They've worked really well with us during COVID and all of the restrictions that we had, and her team really, really recommends this and wholeheartedly supports this, and so do I. My recommendation is that you approve Snow Garrett Williams as the district financial auditor for the 21-22 school year.
I hear motion. Some move. Motion by Ms. Hudson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lawton. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Sit up. Subject C, consider approval of 2021-2022 school calendar.
Okay, so just as Mr. Hickerson went over this with you during the workshop also, the process, in November we started this process where information was sent to all staff members. Anybody that wanted to give any suggestions for the next year's calendar, they were able to submit those to Mr. Hickerson. And then after that was done, Mr. Hickerson put together and took those suggestions, created three calendars, sent those out to campus side base teams as well as to all staff members to vote. So every staff member had an opportunity to vote on their campus, and then each campus had a vote. If this, this campus, this calendar unanimously, with the exception of one campus, but it was a very, very close vote, chose this calendar. So then we had a discussion in our district improvement committee on that, and it was unanimously voted on for this calendar. So our staff, as well as community and business members on our district improvement committee, had a hand in this development. And so my, I recommend that you approve the recommended calendar for the 21-22 school year.
I make the motion that we approve that 2021 school calendar.
Motion by Ms. Brute.
And I already said this is the only time.
Exactly. Three times last year that we had to re-improve the calendar due to COVID.
I think it's more than three.
I'll say it. Motion by Ms. Brute. Second, Professor Hudson. Any further discussion or question? All favor. Sit up. Subject E, consider a resolution of the board regarding protected unpaid leave during the COVID-19 pandemic. Consider a special call board meeting. That's why I want to give.
We have a special, we're asking that you consider a special call board meeting. We have our school board election on May 1st, 2021, and our votes must be canvassed by May 12th. And so our, our May school board meeting is scheduled for May 17th. So we're asking you to please consider calling a special board meeting for May 10th so that we can meet that timeline requirement. So my recommendation. Okay, so Ms. Stabo went over this with you. This is in an effort because of many of our staff members have had to quarantine multiple times to be out for COVID, and because of that, we, when allowable, we allow those staff members to work remotely, but not all, that cannot happen in every situation. We also have the opportunity last fall, we had the EPSIL through that federal unpaid leave or paid leave program. You know, the federal government stopped that as of December 31st, but as a school board, you guys approved for us to allow for our staff to have that. So we have two, two times that these, our staff can get unpaid leave due to COVID issues. But even with all of that, we still have staff who have had to be out longer due to COVID. But following our policy in DEC, because of our neutral absence control policy, with, if they go so many days with unpaid leave, then that can result in termination. In order to protect these staff members, we're asking that you approve this resolution to help those staff who have to be out with unpaid leave days because of COVID. And we're asking that this resolution be in effect through June 4th. So my recommendation is that you approve the resolution regarding protected unpaid leave during the COVID pandemic for our staff members.
Just air motion.
Some move.
Motion by Ms. Lawton. Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or question? All favor. Sit up. Subject F, consider task B update 116 affecting local policy.
Okay, so this is our most recent task B policy update. These policies affect technology, they affect some of our employment practices and some just health services and community relations conduct on premises. It goes along with law. And so we've had all of our staff members review these policies to make sure that our practice is consistent with these recommended local policies from task B. Mr. Hickerson oversaw that, and all of these policies are in alignment with our practices and we are following the law and requirements. My recommendation is that you approve the revisions to the Joshua ISD local policies as recommended.
Okay, I hear motion by Ms. Brute. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hudson. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Sit up. Okay, move to subject G. I think we get in the long list. Consider approval of waiver for low attendance day for Cattle Grove Elementary on January 11th, 2021.
Okay, so we have several campuses that we're going to bring these low attendance waivers to you. This is for the day of January 11th. That was the day that the weather, there was some potential for icy weather after driving the roads that morning early. We determined that it was safe for school on the road. However, we did, there was some low attendance. So what allows you to apply for an attendance waiver through TEA is if you look at the ADA, the average daily attendance for the prior year for the district. Our average daily attendance for the prior year was 96.84%. If a campus's attendance for any day of following school year falls 10 percentage points below that, then TEA allows you to apply for a waiver so that you do not have to throw that day into your average daily attendance for the year. We have several campuses, so we're going to go through those. I'll, I'll just let you know what that percentage was for the day on January 11th of that campus. So we're going to start with Cattle Grove, and the first one, Cattle Grove on January 11th, 2021, their attendance percentage for that day was 79.7%. So I am recommending that you approve a low attendance day waiver for Cattle Grove. And also, all of these waivers have been presented to our district improvement committee, and they all have voted to bring those to you. So my recommendation is to approve this low attendance waiver, attendance day waiver for Cattle Grove Elementary for January 11th of 2021.
Set leave.
Motion by Ms. Brute. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lawton. Your voice changed.
My man. Just to call the red.
Yeah. Motion by Ms. Brute. Second, Professor Lawton. Any further discussion or question? All favor. Sit up. Subject H, consider approval waiver for low attendance day for Elder Elementary.
Okay, so on January 11th of 2021, the attendance percentage for Elder Elementary was 79.8%. My recommendation is that you approve a low attendance day waiver for Elder Elementary for January 11th of 2021.
Okay, air motion.
A move to approve an agenda item H, it's stated.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lawton. Second by Ms. Brute. Any further discussion or questions? All favor. Sit up. Subject G, consider approval waiver for low attendance for Joshua High.
Okay, so on that day, the attendance percentage for Joshua High School on January 11th was 80.1%. So I recommend that you approve a low attendance day waiver for Joshua High School for January 11th of 2021.
Air motion.
Some move.
Motion by Ms. Hudson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further script, discussion or question? All favor. Sit up. Subject J, consider approval waiver for low attendance day for Laughlin Middle.
So on January 11th, the percentage, the attendance percentage at Laughlin Middle School was 83.4%. I recommend that you approve a low attendance day waiver for Laughlin Middle School for January 11th of 2021.
Air motion.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lawton. Second by Ms. Brute. Any further discussion or question? All favor. Sit up. Subject K, consider approval of waiver for low attendance day for Nichols Middle School.
Okay, for, on that day for January 11th, the attendance percentage for Nichols Middle School was 86%. So I recommend that you approve a low attendance day waiver for Nichols Middle School for January 11th of 2021.
Some move.
Good luck. Mr. Hudson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or question? All favor. Sit up. Subject G, consider approval of waiver for low attendance day for Ninth Grade Center.
Okay, so the attendance percentage for our Ninth Grade Center on January 11th was 82.3%. I recommend that you approve a low date, a low attendance day waiver for Ninth Grade Center on January 11th of 2021.
Set leave.
Motion by Ms. Brute. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lawton. Any further discussion or question? All favor. Sit up. Subject M, consider approval of waiver for low attendance day for Plum Creek Elementary.
Okay, for Plum Creek Elementary on January 11th, attendance percentage was 76.3%. So I recommend that you approve a low attendance day waiver for Plum Creek Elementary on January 11th of 2021.
Air motion.
Some move.
Motion by Ms. Lawton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hudson. Any further discussion or question? All favor. Sit up. Subject N, consider approval of waiver for low attendance day for Staples Elementary.
Okay, so the attendance percentage for Staples Elementary on January 11th was 79.7%. So I recommend that you approve a low attendance day waiver for Staples Elementary on January 11th, 2021.
Set leave.
Motion by Ms. Brute. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or question? All favor. At this time, the board of the committee and the class sessions is authorized to present the document that section double code section five five one zero zero one is by size one, x eight oh zero eight four. That is. That is.
Hey, we're back in the ready section now for, and Ms. Harris got a recommendation?
I sure do. I would like to recommend Jane Seemster for the Laughlin Middle School principal.
Seven eight.
Motion by Ms. Pratt, figure here's a second. My right hand, all of them. Any further discussion or question? You ready for this?
Yes, you're ready.
All in place. Six up.
Congratulations. Yep, that's it.